So I'd like to reconvene our U forty-six only board meeting at seven thirty-five. We have on the, do we have no visitors to be heard tonight that's U forty-six centric? So we'll go right to our first topic, which is our May two thousand and fourteen S-BAC field test administration topic that Amy and Rob are gonna lead us through, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Quite experience. It took a collaborative effort, to say the least, and I thank Bob and his staff for allowing us access to three rooms, three classrooms under the library, get the desktops we needed to go through the S-BAC experience with our juniors. It was interesting to note that, not knowing what to expect, but thinking of a traditional paradigm model of paper and pencils, we did all the juniors together on one full day and then the two half-days. And although we have yet to meet, our S-BAC committee will meet this Wednesday to debrief from that experience, I think based on the computerized assessment aspect, we learned, both from feedback from the students and the teachers who administered the assessment, that perhaps moving forward next year with a ninety-day window, which is much larger than a typical kneecap window for assessments, that we may not have to try and turn the school day on its head to administer the S-BAC, which I think is a real positive outcome. I would say also, thanks to Amy and her assistance, Erica LeClaire and Carrie Fogg in particular, two local in-house people that did outstanding work with Kim Gayworth from Central Office. It was really impressive to see how the team put it together with teacher representation and the Eddies, IT, CTE, put it all together to get this experience off the ground. And it should be noted that Michael Hawke from the state and Frank Gertman from the state, they weren't that far ahead of us, because in fairness to them, they didn't know a whole lot what to expect either. So we were, as the year unfolded and went on, we were learning and then getting updates a week or so from, from Michael Hawke and company saying, oh, by the way, we just found out that you would want to do this, or you want to consider this. And they came and visited us, um, May twenty-eighth, the Wednesday, the half-day Wednesday, the performance task, assessment of math. And it was good for them to be here and communicate with teachers and our kids, because they went right in classrooms and asked kids, what, what do you think? What, what worked, what didn't work, et cetera, et cetera. So certainly more to come, but we, certainly we learned a lot by being a test, test school. And I'm really glad we were a test school, because going into this cold next year with this, the size, we might've made a mistake in scheduling it. But having experienced it, and then debriefing a few days from now, I think we'll have a schedule that'll be certainly conducive to our students performing as well as they can. And that was a huge piece of being a pilot school. At the same time, we, we opened our doors up and we had, many schools have visiting teams to come and see what it was like. South Burlington comes to mind, and BFA and some others, because obviously there's, if you're not a pilot school, there's some apprehension about what that's gonna look like when it, you know, takes place for, for real next year. And our kids, for the most part, great effort. We prepped them in terms of taking an advisory time period, thirty minutes, and getting them on a computer so that they could learn the controls and devices that appeared on the screen, like the calculator for the math piece, which is not necessarily intuitive for students. So I wish we had this meeting after Wednesday, because we could get the full, but certainly, you know, June eighteenth, I could probably give you another update, since we're gonna meet two days from now. We really haven't had time to meet, trying to get action plans together and meet with leadership teams and things of that nature. But Amy, anything you'd like to-
Just to give us an overview, and I know this, you weren't here for a lot of the conversation we had over the last year, um, this has really been a year in the making. Um, we were asked to pilot this in exchange for not taking kneecap, and when we bravely did that, we didn't know what we didn't know. But I'm very proud of the teachers and students and how they handled it. We were, uh, we learned mid-February that it would be eight and a half hours of testing that we would need to set aside. Two hours for math test, two hours for English Language Arts test, two hours for a math performance assessment, and two and a half hours for an English Language Arts performance assessment. The performance assessments are different than what we would normally have. As Rob said, it was not kneecap coming in in boxes. The performance task required a thirty-minute instructional activity with a script that teachers worked with students, students had to do some turn and talk, and then students logged on, and we didn't know what the questions were gonna be. We knew what the activity was, but we didn't know what they were gonna be asked to do with that information. Three hundred and four juniors sat in front of desktop computers. We made, the committee made a commitment early on to, to not do it with laptops, just try it with desktops. Three hundred and four headphones were distributed, several packets with instructional activities, students with individual ID codes. We had what we nicknamed the bat phone set up upstairs. If somebody's test and it did, showed up in Spanish, we called the bat phone, the teacher would call in, and Kim and Carrie raced down and would fix it. This was unlike something we hadn't seen before.
Impossible.
And I, and I think you've heard this already, but this is a test that was implemented at Essex High School, and implemented in this field test in a way that it wasn't designed. In other words, this is designed to be done in classrooms over a ninety-day period of time with the classroom teacher. We were given a very short window to give this. So we did what we, what we had to do, which was shut down the school, count out our headphones, make sure there were extra computers going, because that one, yep, it didn't work, so good thing we had an extra one sitting next to it. We trained fifty teachers to administer this. All teachers have to, have to participate in a training, so we organized a training for them, and we did have some Colchester teachers sneak in and watch our training. It was fascinating. We've collected over fourteen pages of teacher feedback and student feedback on the exam. Michael Hawke was here, and he and I went in and interviewed some of the students. Happy to share with you, I know you don't have a lot of time tonight, what those results look like, but as Rob said, the, the S-BAC committee, of whom I'm very proud, they met every two weeks, it was a volunteer committee, and I think we fed them once. We'll be debriefing and looking at all of the feedback, some of the things that we heard from students. They felt ready to take it, by and large. This was not a computer adaptive test. The real test will be computer adaptive. This was the field test, which means, in a computer adaptive environment, if I don't do well on an item, it moves to my developmental level. In this field test, I tested really hard questions, then followed by really easy ones, then really hard ones, because they're testing the items to create the computer adaptive. So we weren't quite sure how students would interact with that, because some of these were pretty tough questions. The students felt that it was an application test. In other words, and that was the word that one, one young lady said, that, that she felt like she was applying a lot of what she had learned across multiple domains within math and with language arts. They enjoyed the performance task. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, they, we as administrators took the test, we took the, um, the practice test about a year in advance, and some of the things we were worried about in technology, kids were not. We didn't like split screens, you know, whereas adults, we don't like reading and then having to type on the side. Kids didn't have a problem with that at all. We spent a lot of time helping kids figure out how to use calculators. Some of them figured out things we hadn't figured out already, because some were pretty comfortable with that. It does involve a lot of prep work in advance. We have a massive database that we have every student's name on, with a whole series of accommodations that we can turn on, turn off, so that we load that up to S-BAC, and then when a student logs on, their accommodations are there. And sometimes it worked, and sometimes it didn't. I would just say again, I'm very proud of our teachers and students and how they engaged in this work, and we learned a lot.
Another thing I just would share, which is no surprise, we intentionally had the pilot test after all the AP tests were over. We didn't want, teachers felt correctly, they didn't want to lose instructional time for that, and we wanted to make sure that all the instructional time opportunities were there, so that the tests, when they're taken in May, students would have the optimal chance of doing well. Obviously, we had science kneecap, which is continuing and will continue for the science assessment, May twelfth. Also feedback from, I would say, habits of, habits of mind was referenced early, earlier tonight, from some of our more conscientious, hardworking students, questions was, especially by the two half-days, they were spent, they were just wiped from all the assessment fatigue. And that's noteworthy too, as we go ahead next year, because they gave it their best shot, but they were just running out of gas in some cases.
And that is a concern that we've all shared, that our juniors are experiencing a lot of assessments.
Yeah. You got the ACTs and the SATs, sometimes multiple times, the test now, and now, obviously, the kneecap science in May as well. So that was one of the things that some students mentioned, very honestly. But I'm glad we did it as compared to not doing it. But boy, it sounded a lot better last fall.
So, Rob, I heard you say three hundred and four juniors took it. Is that three hundred and four out of how many would we have ex, did, I'm sure it wasn't a hundred percent of our juniors, right?
Correct.
Because-
Correct.
Just on a participation percentage?
Well, the first day, the first day, when it was two hours English Language Arts, two hours math, with a break in between, there were, I think, what, sixty or seventy students that, sixty or seventy juniors that didn't attend. But what we did is, we were able to track them down, and before we got to the performance task the following week, they all had the opportunity, I'll use that word, the opportunity to go up in C two thirty, and we had some, our super subs who were trained to administer the assessment, and they, they took it. In terms of the performance tasks, because we didn't have the capability or capacity to replicate the thirty-minute instructional piece, those that didn't show on the, on that particular day, we weren't able to make up. But in terms of a percentage, I'll use the first day, because we're able to get kids for makeup, so I would say probably eighty percent.
And some we knew about, some had already been scheduled to take AP exams, so we scheduled it for them.
Yeah.
We did have some parents call in and say they didn't want their child participating. And it's, it's a consideration for us to think about in terms of our messaging around, you know, there's national messaging around Common Core and S-BAC and, and that's something that we talked about as a committee to try to get in front of.
New York State and Indiana.
And the other piece that's, that's not, right, the other piece that's not new, is that eleventh grade students know that this doesn't go on their transcript, it doesn't get them into college. And so that was frank feedback that we gave, and the students were very vocal about when Michael Hawke came to visit, that now that we have forty-four states doing Common Core, twenty-three doing S-BAC and-
Park.
Twenty-one or so doing Park, that number probably didn't add up. That working with universities to be able to value this assessment would cause it to mean more to students.
Well, for years, we did put the kneecap results on the transcripts, and that was when there were three and then four states in terms of the kneecap assessment. And that did seem to, along with some other incentives, like the math, the maths piece, math piece, if you are proficient or proficient with distinction, you could earn an exemption as a junior on your final exam this time of the year with the kneecap. So that with the transcript did have some meaning for students moving through the system. But I think, as Amy said, with forty-four states signed on, that should have more meaning for colleges and universities, and therefore more clout for the results. But that, that'll be interesting to see what we come up with as we talk about that Wednesday afternoon.
Amy, Board, Rob, you said that you're considering going to a different way of testing next year, that perhaps you'll use the time throughout the ninety-day window. Just want the Board to be aware that this poses a particular problem for tech centers in the block. I have nine sending schools, ninety days is half my school year. So if there's half my school year open to schools choosing not to send their students to the tech center, and their ultimately plan, it creates an interesting challenge for, right now, with the kneecap, we have a agreed upon window. So-
That's something for regional principal students, guess.
I was gonna say, is that something that Michael Hawke was made aware of?
You know, I think he learned a lot sitting in what I have to assume was the largest high school implementing this field test in the state of Vermont. It's one of the reasons he came out about the, the enormity of this task. What I suspect will occur, and again, I'm, I'm making presumptions before we've met as a team based on some conversations teachers have had, is that the math teachers would like to assess their own kids, and they feel that doing it within our double block would be reasonable, and that the English teachers would like to assess their own students, so that they know the students. It's harder to proctor an exam when you don't know the student, you can't tell if they're working hard or not, but when you know them, it's a little bit different.
Well, it goes back to earlier tonight, when they mentioned in the NTSS presentation, a sense of belonging, having that relationship with the teacher will perhaps bring forth a greater effort and comfort level in that testing environment. So, yeah, there is a strong desire for that to occur.
But I can't speak for the other eight feeder schools, in terms of how they want to do it.
Yeah, that there's, there's challenges there.
There are a lot of benefits to the idea of schools doing it within their block schedule, because they won't shut down their school, but that creates a problem for any students they're sending to the tech center. It may be that we need to go to administer the S-BAC ourselves, which then will require custom training. And I'm not sure we'd have the facilities to do that, so it may be an effect on your side of the building, just to make it known about.
No.
More to come.
Okay. Amy, anything else? Well, the next topic then is our school action plans, and we have those included tonight in our org notes. Rob, let's start first with CTE.
Okay. Try to walk you through in a way that's not gonna be too boring.
So under student learning and achievement, I think it's clear to say there are two basic outcomes. The first will be CTE will increase percentage of students who are prepared for college or other forms of post-secondary education by their senior year. And the second is CTE will increase percentage of students who are career-ready by the end of each program year. I'd say that that is a watered-down version of what our mission is for the center. It may be seen as an oversimplification, but really it's at the root ball, and we do want to point out that on that first outcome, we also consider post-secondary opportunities to include things like state apprenticeships and trainings in technical areas that lead to certifications and greater employment. So it's not just typical post-secondary thinking. Our performance targets, some of these are carried over from the last couple of years, and a few are new. Increased enrollments in Intro to College Studies and other student college classes, including CTE enrollment. I think we do wonderfully in CTE enrollment. To remind the Board, what that means is we've got commitments from seven, I think, maybe eight, teachers of program areas who are recognized as adjunct faculty at either Montechical College, or Shemley College, or in some cases, Johnson State. They take this on themselves, at no cost to the center or the students. This may be a way to defray the cost of college credits, because the instruction comes as part of the teacher's regular instructional day. Students will qualify for an exam in January, and then those exams are controlled by the sponsoring school, sponsoring post-secondary, and the teachers work to their standards. Some concerns about what the Vermont Fast Forward Program, which was the original dual enrollment and college voucher system for tech center students in the state, what will happen with that next year? We appear that it may be enrolled, it may be pulled into legislation that limits vouchers and sunsets state funding. So we're not sure where we're gonna end up as a tech center, and whether we'll be able to offer dual enrollment and post-secondary courses, I think we'll be in the same boat as our high schools in the region. We continue to grow in that over the years, and we'll continue to consider that performance target that makes sense to strive towards and to measure. Increased post-secondary placement, that's as measured by my annual Perkins report. Improved data collection and trend analysis to establish better teaching practices, that's a fancy way of saying we bought into the admin-informed system, and we're going to establish benchmarks in different areas to load into admin-inform and track over time, conduct initial MTSS assessment, you heard about that today. Those are the performance targets that we're going to enter into for increased percentage of students who are prepared for college, other forms of post-secondary. You can see the action steps in the right column, go through that. Increased percentage of students who are career-ready by the end of each program year. You may remember that all programs that are approved by the state are required to have industry-recognized credentials in, as outcomes of their programs. So an industry-recognized credential may look like a welding certification, natural resources, a coding certification in health informatics, serve safe certification for students in professional foods, things like that. So that's measured every year. Our target for next year is seventy percent. We approach high sixties now, we're, we're in the woodshed. Increased success rate on state-approved computer assessments is measured by technical skills assessment. This is also reported as a local measure for our federal Perkins grant. At this point, I would say that seventy percent of our programs have state-approved, third-party-designed, valid and reliable assessments. Those are given at the end of every year. We've made strides every year to improve our, our performances in those areas. I think the things that have helped us the most are our things like test prep, working with students to be prepared to take the assessment online in the form that is designed by the psychometricians coming out of Washington DC. This year, four or five, I can't remember, of our newer programs were in what they call pilot, so it's the first year that they've tried it, next year they'll report. The rest of our programs are collecting data and reporting data. One step that we've taken to increase students' awareness and buy-in is we are now using results on the state assessment as part of the local grade. So students know that their performance is important, because it will be rolled into a final grade. So there's, there's the thing that's lacking in S-BAC that did that kneecap. Increased number of program participating in state-approved technical assessment systems such as dental and health informatics. Every time a new test comes out, we are first to the party to try to help design the tests and participate. So one thing I want to point out is some of our Perkins money, in one of the steps, some of our Perkins money, C in the far right-hand column, is going to purchase and maintain the number of Chromebook labs in places where we haven't had the technology to be able to do the test. That's not just about taking the test, but that's about test prep for the students. So natural resources and building trades, those outposts, will have technology, and students can practice to take the test. Under self, uh, sorry, safe, healthy, and respectful learning environments, we've got three outcomes. We'll enrich the campus experience for students through the expansion and development of activities that provide students with positive and healthy options. We will continue to improve practices related to gender equity and diversity, thereby ensuring fair and equitable treatment of all students. And we will continue to ensure a collaborative voice in decision-making for students and staff. Think, how I would describe those three outcomes are seen in our collaborative leadership models, known as our faculty advisory groups, that we will continue in our second year next year. Our job-embedded professional development program, where faculty are required to take one of three or four tracks that are pre-approved and run for a minimum of three years. Next year will be the third year of our first three tracks, and we're starting to move into the following three-years plan, which will be curriculum, instruction, and assessment-focused. So we're gonna pilot the assessment program that Amy talked about a little bit. All of our professional development tracks allow a teacher to go beyond the required contractual professional development in-service days, commit to a little bit more work, so that they can earn graduate-level credits at St. Mike's. All of our tracks provide teachers an option to take the work for the college credit. All of our tracks are taught within the building, so to speak to your point now, they don't have to go anywhere in order to earn college credits. It's important for you.
Access is important, and if you make it easier for them and feed them, I think you usually get some buy-in.
Exactly.
So onto that first one, we'll enrich the campus experience. My measurement is that students and staff will report an increased awareness of health, health-related initiatives sponsored, offered by CTE. My major indicator for that is our climate survey, and I think we've made really good headway. Anecdotally, we just had the wrap-up of our advisory groups, where we did a gallery walk of all the work that six advisory groups have done, and I would say at least three of them were related to student voice and student buy-in to helping to lead the initiatives that are important to the center. So when, one of the advisory groups did in review the things that students did, they could say students had, student council and the related groups had planned and executed three CTE all-student assemblies, and those student assemblies were focused on healthy choices. They were also part of the dialogue night after the YRBS, they were involved in a number of student-run initiatives within the school for fundraising to help support their selected healthy choice initiatives within their communities. We'll continue to work on that. I, I have to say that Linda Deliva and Chris Crusetti have done an amazing job with student council. They're really involved in the students. CTE will continue to improve practices related to gender equity. That's tied into our gender equity course, which is in the third year for next year. The indicators, as part of Perkins, we are required to report on two indicators. Non-traditional participation rates and non-traditional performance program completion rates. The state, the state agreed upon standard is that sixteen point eight and sixteen point seven percent of our, all of our students are non-trad students enrolled in non-trad programs. An example of that-
Sixty or sixteen?
Sixteen. We have hovered around ten to twelve percent, and I would say that we are about as an active group of faculty and administrators around this initiative, as you're gonna find in the state. I don't know where the tipping point is yet, we continue to look for that tipping point. We're speaking the same language now, we're making good choices, we're not just trying to attract non-traditional students, we're trying to support them and, and ensure that they remain and they're successful. It's just a really hard conversation to attract sixteen percent of your cosmetology students to be male. And the same can be said for your natural resource students to be female. We're taking a couple of initiatives. One of the things is, I'm taking some money from Perkins, and I'm gonna fund a Women in Welding Club this year. I have sixty natural resource students, only four of them are female, and I gotta believe that there's a lot of things that we can introduce young women to in the welding booth that will make them look at career choices differently going forward. So one of the outcomes of that Women in Welding Club is-
So, one of the outcomes of that women in welding club is that we will ask them to apply to the Skills USA competition where there's a new art in welding competition.
Skills should just have a department.
Yep, so we have a fantastic teacher who's going to lead that club next year who actually is a graduate of CVU and went to the Burlington Tech Center welding program and is a shared art teacher between EHS and CTE. So, we're going to woo young women into the welding booths and see what happens.
Rob, next question.
Sure.
Lee, do you know what the rationale is behind the sixteen point eight, sixteen point something? Where are these numbers coming from?
Yeah, I think it's based on federal studies around how you can attract non-traditional students at this developmental stage into non-trad programs. Does it strike you as small or?
Well, it seems like, you know, just in the last few years, you seem to be working awful hard to get your numbers up. And it seems like you're doing better every year.
Yep.
And we're still.
We're still.
It's quite a ways away. So, I just wonder is this just something they kind of, well, this is what we like or is any kind of data that's exactly based on?
It's based on data. We are, we are one of four tech centers in the state that was selected as a STEM equity pipeline school where we've created an action plan for ourselves next year to take steps to improve it. It's sponsored by the National Alliance for Partnership in Equity. The premier group that works on these things. There's a lot going on.
Yeah.
There's stereotype threat alone is a, is a, is a pretty complicated, complex issue to work on within a traditional school. So, within a high school where we talk about ownership and people coming from a lot of different areas. It's hard for a junior to leave their peer group and come to a tech center.
Do you think this is a number you can eventually reach?
I, we try.
Yeah, I don't doubt that.
We spike and we go down and the numbers are so, the numbers are so, numerators and denominators, the loss of one female or the addition of a female can really make a difference. Or a male, put it that way, because it is non-trad all. Try to move along. CTE will continue to ensure a collaborative voice in decision-making for students and staff. Students and staff report that they feel they are an effective part of the decision-making process. Students and staff report they clearly understand decision-making process and who to go to for assistance. And students and staff report that the decision-making process works. Key indicator again is going to be the climate survey. The real work happens in the advisory groups and in student council and the nexus between those two because a lot of times we bring our student leaders into our faculty groups and ask for their assistance as well. That's our action plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Travers?
If the, if the consequence, I mean, this is something I think you you can kind of see the math of this dual enrollment aspect. If it comes over and it becomes part of like the high school and then it all becomes local and that, that cost becomes difficult to bear, it's going to become a competition between other aspects.
So, one of the concerns is that our, Fast Forward was something that I worked on before I came to the tech center when I was at another school. The main purpose for Fast Forward was to support first gen, first generation college students. And it was successful because tech centers are smaller than, the number of tech centers is smaller and we have fewer students enrolled. So, it was easier to get partnerships with VTC, CCV. And we just worked well together. And it's been successful, so successful that it's caught the attention of the legislature which is now saying this is a good idea for me. One of my concerns is that if it gets rolled into, is it Act 177? If it gets rolled into Act 177, what that means is that high school principals will make the decision as to whether students can take college classes in tech centers. That's a potential change. And that's a relationship issue and I'm not sure it's good or bad right now. It places the control in one place. But I'm not sure they always know those students.
Yep.
So, we'll learn more. It's going to be a key initiative for the Vermont Association of Career Tech Ed Directors. And we realize that there's only so much money. But I think a good alternative is to have our, as many faculty as we can recognized as adjunct faculty for the same, for the same colleges.
Yeah, is there, I mean, is, I mean, that's obviously a program that's somewhat organic right now.
Yep.
I mean, is there, is there a better way to understand what a cost of that program might be if it was more systemic?
Well, I think so. I think you could look at, I think you could look at data streams around. So, for instance, all of the teachers that are recognized as adjunct faculty have to have their masters. So, any teacher that didn't have their masters and I wanted them to be able to offer a course in within their instruction. We worked with them to take the classes, not necessarily to get their master's degree, but to take the courses that made sense for them. That's an investment by this district.
Yep.
Through their benefits. But that's happening anyway.
Anyway, right.
So, if you coordinate that, I think you, you can benefit in a number of ways.
Rob, do we have anyone currently as an adjunct professor on the EHS faculty?
Stacy Anthony with the University of Math, University of Vermont in math and statistics.
Right.
So, kids that are in advanced placement.
Oh, that's right.
Stats. And I, it's funny, it's, it's a good question you asked because I had filled out a survey from the VPA just today. And they're trying to compile that data right now as to how many, there was only one other school besides, high school besides us that has that opportunity to have dual enrollment at the high school campus. And there were sixteen, there were eighteen, sixteen other schools that either said no or in the next year or two, they were working towards it.
Yeah.
So, but only, only stats. And if they take, they choose to take the assessment, the UVM assessment at the end of the semester, they would get stats one eleven credit at UVM.
I think it's easier to manage it in a career tech ed center because of the technical content that the schools would feel like they have some control over. So.
Though I think UVM won't accept the AP math. Doesn't, doesn't UVM having something particular? Isn't there a benefit with the, with the stats class particularly with UVM?
Because of the relationship with.
I think there's, I think there's even a particular with, I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
With the control of the curriculum.
When you say organic, that's what I think of is that there are, there are better, there are clearer corollaries. If you have the equipment and you're working to industry standard and
Industry, yeah.
It looks like, so, students in automotive can earn three credits in brakes that gets transcribed at UNOH in Ohio.
Okay, yeah.
But that's because they certify our program through AYES which are, which is our industry recognized credential as well.
Gotcha.
So, there are just more crossovers.
So, students in the AP stats, we have two sections of it this year. They can take the AP test and receive a number, one through five. It used to be a three or above would get you college credit. Now, it depends on the college. It could be three, maybe four, and in some very elite situations, five. And at the same time, because of Stacy's own credentials and her work with the College of Engineering and Mathematics, they can take that stats one eleven assessment and get the three UVM credits as well.
It just, I think we've talked about, I don't know if we've come down to actually figuring out what the lot, what the potential costs might be as we get to 2017. But, you know, this is a, this is a very directed effort to drive interest and consumption towards something that will become a hundred percent district cost.
That's true. It's a win-win for both sides.
So, it, it's just interesting. I hadn't understood that there was maybe a potential different way of looking at it and.
The one thing that you should be aware of too is, one thing I heard, I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm hearing that South Burlington may be moving away from their AP system entirely and going to college credits.
That is a big change.
I don't, like I said, I'm not sure it's true or not.
Well, there is, no, I can tell you there is a move. I'm not sure how overarching or encompassing it is because of the requirements on the teachers
Right.
to become the adjunct professor. I mean, it's, it's fairly robust.
Yeah.
So, if they're in position for that, then yes, they can. But I know it took, just speaking from our own situation here, I know the amount of work that it took for Stacy to get to that point was many years and her own masters in that field. Not a masters in a masters. So, there's a lot of specificity to it when you get into the sciences, mathematics, and English.
Yep.
So, one of the things I do plan on doing for the board, probably it'd be for the August meeting is to look at our current year of dual enrollment and what those numbers played out, where they went.
Be helpful, I have, because there's no, there's no context right now.
Right. So, provide that.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep. Thank you, Rob. Before we go on to Principal Reardon's school action plan, just a reminder tomorrow night is CTE recognition night.
Oh, thank you very much. I don't know how, I forgot that.
All board members, unfortunately, I think I've shared with you, I can't make it tomorrow evening, but I know a couple of board members, Aaron, you said you would be there, Gary, you said you would be there. I encourage you to.
I'll be there, but I didn't get a ticket. I don't know what I need to do about that.
Don't worry, we know you have to.
Okay. Okay, we'll see you there.
So, no, recognition time, recognition night tomorrow night.
So, that reminds me, there'll be seats for you reserved upfront, so you don't have to struggle for a space.
Rob?
We, when we turned in my report to be distributed, this is pretty much the same thing except there were a few boxes that were left blank. And there isn't anything huge that's added on. Nonetheless, trying to meet the deadline of when all these reports were submitted for the org notes, we were meeting right up through noon time of that day trying to get as many eyes on the action plan as we could. In particular, as you may be aware, and I'll just remind you, we have a group of teacher leaders that are sunsetting and a new group of teacher leaders that are coming on board and trying to get everybody's eyes and opinions on the action plan as we move forward to have the opportunity for input. So, student learning and achievement in safe, healthy, and respectful learning environments. We have six total outcomes and seventeen performance targets. Four outcomes in terms of the student learning and achievement. Number one, comprehensive curricula, instructional, and assessment practices aligned with Common Core state standards, next-gen science standards in 2014, educational quality standards. And that's the first major outcome in terms of student achievement. In terms of the performance targets associated with that first item, all curriculum maps completed by June 2015 reflecting Common Core state standards and integration of technology. Now, this year, with Amy's lead with their curriculum content leaders, each teacher has created one curriculum map of a course that they teach. Most teachers will have two and maybe three preps. So, the goal moving forward is to get in a little deeper and to have teachers by the date illustrated there have all the courses that they're going to be teaching mapped out. That's kind of a foundational precursor to moving towards proficiency-based standards, proficiency-based learning and reporting. The second performance target, speaking of which, proficiency-based graduation requirements in place by 2016 freshman for 2020 graduation in compliance with Vermont Ed Quality Standards and aligned to the EHS mission and vision. So, in terms of the deadline being 2020 for this to occur, recognize it starts with a freshman class coming in. So, here we are, June of 2014, and we're talking about fall of 2016 for students coming in. So, all I'd like to share with the board is this is, as we were meeting last week to break down the in-service days that we have and the meeting times that we have throughout the course of the year, basically, we have about eight in-service days because we use three of them for parent-teacher conferences. And one is our freshman orientation day. So, we have eight in-service days and we have, bless you, Monday meetings after school for an hour. And there is, this item alone is a tremendous amount of work because what we, and I have an additional handout which I'll get to at the end in terms of the League of Innovative Schools which were a member and their latest communication, June 3rd. But in other words, there's a lot of work we have to do with our parents, our staff, community in terms of moving to proficiency-based grading and reporting and learning. So, the freshman class of 2020, which is fall of 2016, that kind of moves things up the timeline a lot closer than 2020 in terms of perception. And there's opportunities to tie in with the New England Secondary School Consortium and League of Innovative Schools. Each year, we're a member of this now for four years running. The chair, Jack, and superintendent, Mike, and now Judy have to sign off on us continuing to work with the league each year. With that comes the opportunity for resources and collaboration with schools in New England to help this transition be smooth, especially now that it's been legislated and mandated. The third performance target under the first outcome is full implementation of math Common Core state standards and mathematical practices. And that is, that is ongoing work our math teachers are doing in terms of having Algebra I realigned, geometry realigned, and now working towards Algebra II and eventually the other courses. And as Amy can attest, it's certainly more than just what the high school teachers are doing. It's a K-12 endeavor of what the realignment of standards are moving forward. I think it was mentioned earlier, it, earlier tonight when all the boards were present. In terms of curricular realignment, it's a Herculean effort that everyone's undertaking to move to Common Core standards. So, all these outcomes making me point that there is a tremendous amount of time necessary for everyone to move forward on this. On page two, additional performance targets. Full implementation, 1.4, full implementation of the integrated model of literacy. Literacy Common Core state standards across all content areas. And Erica LeClaire, the work that she's done this year and will continue to do as our literacy coach is invaluable. She's doing a wonderful job in helping teachers in all content areas embrace the revamped literacy standards. 1.5, successful implementation of S-Back. We talked about that a little bit tonight and more to come in a few days. Implementation of the next-gen science standards by 2016, 2017. Spoke with Kelly Hill as recently as last week. And teachers are already, science teachers, I should say, excuse me, are already gearing up. The first day back, August 20th, they have a full-day work session with an outside consultant in terms of how to incorporate the next-gen science standards and realign that with our curriculum. If you recall, the last time we had a realignment of standards, we drastically modified our ninth-grade science experience. 1.7, integration of career life skills curriculum across all content areas. You'll notice the boxes to the right of that, the last two, continue the work, continue the work. Pam Hemingway is now our career coach. And since this is all new to us, even though we're trying to show things three years out, we really don't know much beyond the first year and we'll have to reassess and reevaluate after the first year for 2015, 16, which is why it just says continue the work. 1.8, integration of technology. We've had a technology task team that has met inconsistently throughout the year. We're going to meet June We're going to meet June eighteenth, Vince Canillo, Kerry Fogg, Martine Gulik, and others that have been uh on the, on the task team in terms of looking to where we want to go, in terms of a commitment of resources. We have, in the past, looked to our infrastructure in terms of switches, bandwidth, wireless access points, which have greatly uh been enhanced, and also the boards, and this board in particular, has increased our technicians or capability. If we don't have the support, technology's only as good as when it works, and that's been greatly appreciated. So, we feel we've got the foundation laid appropriately where we can move forward. So, this committee will be uh one of the buckets of work as we move forward um next, next uh fall. In a few months, actually, in August. Second outcome, uh on page three, equitable access for all students and all classes to experience depth of understanding and application of knowledge. So, the first performance target, next to that item, full implement, full implementation of the multi-tiered system of supports in place by June twenty eighteen, four-year plan. You heard that presented tonight, um obviously, we've just done it at the ELT level. We need uh certainly to get this off the ground in the next fall. Second performance target, successful NEAS accreditation, for those of you that were around a year, a little over a year ago, we had a fifty-seven-page document, a report. With a lot of uh accommodations forty-two and some recommendations thirty-two. And we are uh going to be due for a two-year report, October. So, um that's a lot of work moving forward as well. Sue Salto and I will be leading the charge on that work. Uh, the third outcome, all students experience personalized education with a focus on career and academic pathways and opportunities for cross-disciplinary and self-directed learning. Inquiry, problem-solving, higher-order thinking skills, and applying knowledge and skills to authentic tasks. The associated performance target, the implementation of Essex High School Personalized Learning Plans by twenty seventeen for all students. Keep in mind, fall of twenty fifteen is when we have to implement it with one class moving forward. They'll be training on that in August at Castleton State College. This is designed in compliance with Vermont EQS to include a description of the scope and rigor of learning opportunities and support services necessary for the student to achieve college and career readiness from the Ed Quality Standards. The fourth outcome, under student learning and achievement. EHS employs data decision-driven, uh driven decision-making system-wide, where current and historical student data are an integral part of the school's decision-making process and academic program. Uh, performance uh targets, implementation of Edmund and Form. Selected key people will be getting training in the summer, and then we hope to get teacher leaders trained soon after that, moving forward. And obviously, uh support staff as needed. Development of school-wide culture for data-driven decision-making. I mean, I think at the high school level, and I'm sure at CTE, we, you know, the thirst for data. But data to be accessed in a planned, predictable, clear manner, which is something that hasn't always been there. Is something that everybody's thirsting for, and I think it could certainly better inform our next steps, whether it's supports or modifications and instruction and assessment moving forward. So, that is uh, you know, something that we're all looking forward to. In terms of safe, healthy, and respectful learning environments, we have two outcomes. Students are actively engaged in their learning, demonstrate growth in areas of social, civic, and ethical conduct, and develop mature habits of my, habits of mind and attitudes. In terms of performance targets, each, each student should be known well by an adult other than his or her counselor. Well, as you know, this is probably the, the main uh thrust we've had this current school year. And that is having uh an advisory in place for all students, not just ninth and tenth graders, which we've had some model in the past, but, so a student will get to know an adult other than the school counselor in the building to be an advocate for the student in his or her time here. And we're at the point now where next Wednesday, the last day here, we've got faculty feedback on the first year of advisory. And student feedback on the first year of advis- of advisory. And we're going to present the results to faculty, and there'll be um a task team next year, school year to take that work and continue it moving forward. And Karen Zdowski and Stacy Anthony will be leading, leading that group. Second performance target in that outcome, determine the interface of advisory and personalized learning plans. So, VSAC in coordination with Naviance is poised to release a model that perhaps could be used by schools. Chittenden County Principals, when we've met this year, we really want all the schools in Chittenden County to use the same model. Because with more mobility from school to school, we don't want to have, as Bob can only appreciate. You know, nine different schools with ten different templates. And we don't want that to happen, just like we really want our middle schools to have the same uh model as well. So, as kids move up, it can flow over with the flip of a switch with the Edmund and Form system and not have to have stacks of folders of papers to convert. So, that's, that's a real important body of work going forward. Charlie Burnett will be, and Mark Floyd, our new guidance director, will be spearheading the PLP work. And the third performance target, provide necessary professional development to all faculty, support advisors as advocates. I know that's, that's something that teachers had mentioned two years ago, before we even met, uh went to a system to make sure that we have proper PD for the teachers, so that when they're with students, in particular with a personal learning plan as described uh by legislation moving forward, that it will be meaningful for obviously the students and also for the teacher advisor as that morphs over time. The second uh outcome, under safe, healthy, and respectful learning environments, the school culture is collaborative, respectful, and collegial. And the performance target there is um student, teachers, invested adults, or contributing members of the community exercising both voice and decision-making responsibilities. In terms of a carryover item from the current action plan that is sunsetting, there is a task team, we're going to meet also this Wednesday. Which has met four times so far this year in terms of looking at the department head model. The three years we've had learning community leaders, academy leaders, and curriculum content leaders, looking at other models and coming up with a recommendation um not only for a teacher leadership model and a decision-making model, but also for student inputs. So, that deliverable is going to be due late fall this calendar year, twenty fourteen, before we get to the budget cycle. We don't think it's going to be, it won't be, it won't be more, it won't be more of an expense, it will be a realignment of various models. Oh, the other thing, on the twenty fourteen, fifteen um timeline under that second outcome in safe, healthy, and respectful learning environments, we're obviously going to be targeting and strategizing uh certainly to get better outputs from our respective stakeholders on the climate survey. Because I think Gary, you mentioned at the last meeting, we've got, we've got results, but I'm not sure what to take away from them. Where we had results the first year, um we need to get obviously much uh higher participation. So, we will do that. I guess the other thing I would ask the board to consider on the bottom of the last page, there are reference links in terms. And in particular, when you, when you have time, and I realize you folks don't have time either in your, in your lives as well. But those links could be very helpful to get you informed in terms of what some of those things mean, and get you up to speed quicker. The last thing I wanted to share, and then I'll take some questions, is uh New England Secondary School Consortium, which, as I mentioned, were, were a member, they put out a, a press release, June third. And the headline is fifty-five New England colleges and universities support stronger student preparation. And this is in regards to the proficiency-based uh learning and reporting that is going on and will be going on starting the fall of twenty sixteen, in terms of going away from a traditional letter or numerical scale that we're used to and perhaps comfortable with, generally speaking. And one of the concerns, as we've met over time, whether it's in New Hampshire or Massachusetts, is, you know, well, how will higher ed look as high schools change? It's, you know, very common for elementary schools, you're probably familiar, our middle schools this fall are going to proficiency-based uh report cards moving forward. Well, part of the work of the Executive Council of this organization, based in Portland, is to meet with the colleges and universities throughout New England and to communicate with them and talk about what the strategies are moving forward and to get them on board, so that there's no uh concern, which a, a parent would rightly have about, well, how will Susie or Johnny get into college with a proficiency as compared to a A or a ninety-five or whatever the calibration is. So, this is uh impressive work that they have done moving forward, and it's, it's not just in New England. Because one of the schools that is touted as um a lead, yes, leader for high school graduation requirements is Eagle Park, I believe, in Colorado. So, it is nationwide, you've got this. Yep, I just wanted you to have this. But obviously, there still is a lot of work from a communication point of view that we have to do, starting next fall. In terms of engaging students, parents, community members, staff members, uh moving forward on this uh initiative, which also is chugging down the tracks. We have a lot to do, on the very back page is the higher ed signatories that the folks in Portland have gathered so far. And it's not an, it's not an inclusive list, and there are still are some that they are meeting with and hope to have signed on in very near future. Those are the highlights, we, we tried to show you a three-year, a three-year uh window out, even though it's a two-year plan, and the third year is just to show that, you know, there's a significant amount of work. And we've got six, six outcomes, not a huge number, but within those six outcomes, there's a lot to do in a what seems like a real short period of time moving forward. So, that's what I have.
Right, thank you, Rob, let's catch your breath for a second.
Thank you.
Do we have any, any questions for Principal Reardon?
Just one brief.
Okay.
I've seen that working organizations where data can actually be so overwhelming, and consume so much resource. In your discussions for data-driven decision-making, have you considered um in the design to facilitate a, what's called a, it's a cut limit for where, once an incident or some incidents are now weighted all the same, but it's an exception reporting of approach, so that the most important uh things in our terms of administrator time and other support personnel time are addressed first, rather than having to go through all the data manually. It's called exception reporting.
I haven't quite heard it, that, that title or that framework, but there has been a, there has been a multiple conversations about not having a tsunami of data. But having data that we can have the, the key results that we collectively identify and including local data, so that if we have, for example, this is something that the board can remember a few years ago, by committing resources to a lab component for some students in algebra. How was that going to play out in terms of their achievement? Well, it was, it was shown that it increased their achievement. So, we're looking at the, the balance between important standardized assessments like the science kneecap and the S P A C moving forward. And just as important, maybe more important, what are the, what are the local data points that we want to keep our focus on to mark, to chart growth over time?
By establishing a cut limit, you can then determine what your, your, your people actually can absorb. And in a reasonable time, and you can bring it up and down as conditions change. I think it's an important concept built into the design, so that it helps to make it more manageable and to focus on the important things that need to change.
One of the things we did this spring that made that what you're describing, um, we didn't have it in this data system, so it was a lot of handwork from Erica and Kerry was to look at all of the students who took the Star Reader. As you may remember, we've changed to the Star Reader Enterprise, which is supposed to be aligned to Common Core. All the students who took that, who scored at a seventh-grade instructional level or below, who also did not pass proficiency on their eighth-grade kneecap, and who were also not already on a plan. And so, what we did is we wintered it down to a manageable number and then said, huh, what is this else about these kids?
You could establish three cut limits on this one report outcomes, but that exception data, the media.
And in the training, we also want teachers to um have this very accessible on their desktop. Now, it's very challenging to get, depending on what you want to get, to access it. And once again, it's that time, being efficient and yet not be overwhelmed either.
Exactly.
Yep. But I, I'm very confident there'll be plenty more conversations as we, as we get, as we get trained on Edmund and Form and as we roll it out to teacher leaders and then teachers.
Rob, in uh, in one point seven, the integration of career life skills curriculum across all content areas.
Yep.
Go ahead.
The second and third bullet points there talk about professional staff, students, and community. Provide accessible career life resources for community and implement career life initiatives for community. Can, can you tell me what you mean by community? I understand students, I understand professional, but I don't know if I understand
Well.
community or in the context that you're saying it there.
Partly, partly stems from our trip to Thomas Jefferson a few summers ago.
Right.
And the desire to eventually get to a joint EHS CTE Career Center. And to have perhaps representative counselors in, in the location at times during the day when students could access it, so that you could have, uh for example, in the Career Center, you could have local engineer in Monday from nine to eleven. And also, you could do this virtually as well. So, looking to uh tie in community members that are already in the workforce and the skill sets that they employ with students. So, that's, that's really, has to be developed.
Because I, I took it a different way, I, I, when I read it, I was thinking we would open this up for adult learners in our community to come in and be students as part of it, but you're looking more engaging with uh community representatives
Yes.
And for, for skills or uh curriculum areas for, for our students and, okay, got it, okay.
Yes, and um it has tremendous, tremendous potential, just building off the uh, we had the Capstone, ABPA Capstones reported out, and then last Thursday, we had the TIPS internships and the STEM internships and the representative community members that worked with our students attended as well. And that's, it's, it's really, not, and you know, CTE's had this for years in, in their experiences, but you really get some strong partnerships.
Right.
And really, you know, for high school students, the big R is relevance, and this really helps connect the dots of that with seeing it in action. So, we hope to uh build on that, and Mary Beth Porelli has done outstanding work with the, the Business Faculty Forum that we had two MLK days ago, where we had four career people in with twenty to twenty-five faculty members. And spent the whole morning talking about, you know, what are you seeing in worker skills, and what would you like to see? And, and that took up the whole morning. And then, students, Student Focus Forum, we had February seventh, twenty thirteen, at Saint Michael's in terms of the various um skills that are necessary, now called transferable skills uh in the workforce moving forward, so it's, it's exciting stuff. And that's one of the areas where, you know, beyond next year, we really don't know what's going to happen two and three years out, because it's brand new this school year.
Good, thank you, any other questions? Any other questions from Brian?
So I guess, I mean, I didn't find a solution in my own mind as I thought about it, because many of these things are sort of being delivered with their preordained deadlines. But with the alphabet soup that we have of the multi-tiered support and the Common Core and the Next Gen and the proficiency-based and the personal learning plans and the S-PACs, advisory, EdForm, I mean, all these transitions are going to require already overburdened teachers and administrators, extra time to plan, to train, to implement. They're all going to require extra time to communicate and to explain externally, and they're all happening simultaneously. One could envision that this plan is less than ideal, just for the sense of, you know, convergence, that's more of a likelihood of collision. So, you know, where is, is there, I mean, I'm getting more of that kind of outside of our realm, more of the heat and social flair of Common Core. You know, that seems to be picking up speed right now, which makes me think that it's a wave we should be ahead of, talking about our interest in, our interest in our preparation and our involvement in it, you know, because I'm not sure how much externally we've been out there to our citizens, our taxpayers, our stakeholders, and so forth. That's just one example, and probably not the one that's, you know, the next one down would be that, you know, starting to talk about something like the proficiency-based here at Essex with eighty-one percent. This does not constitute, you know, a large percentage of the eighty-one percent.
No.
So it's, still, it's going to be quite a conundrum of sort of a multi-tiered information campaign to prepare the process for. So I guess, is there, is there, is there something we as a board can do to advocate for some of these deadlines that are legislated? I mean, some of these things are deadlines because people thought that this was the, you know, that twenty fifteen just made so much sense.
To some.
To some. And, you know, that they're, but I'm not sure when they thought that it made so much sense, that they saw that, you know, the Common Core was necessarily coming down and S-PACs needed to come after that and so forth.
And Next Gen Science Standards.
And Next Gen Science Standards, and all of those were, you know, potentially going to require, you know, a twenty to thirty percent investment of uncompensated time of teachers to just be prepared for, you know, just that kind of goodwill of just, please invest your own time to be a great professional, because that's what it comes down to. And then on top of that, also do this, 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 and this.
I guess I can speak for the Common Core Next Gen standards and the transition there. K-12, we've posed the question several times to teachers, do you think this is what kids should be able to do? Do you think this is, do you think these standards are worthy? And by and large, they come back with yes. They like how concise they are, they like the rigor. It's going to take time for us to get there, because math is a good example, we're overhauling classrooms, without the students having had the experience yet that's designed in the K-8 setting. So we know there's going to be a period of time where students are going to be coming in not ready for those. In terms of S-PAC, again, I'm pretty proud of the teachers and students around that one. I think, I think we'll have a need to get out there and talk to parents, because I do agree with you, I think that some families are hearing noise that makes them feel that something's wrong and they should fight against it. I think that played out in a few parents who called their students in not to take the test. But as I said to Michael Hock, it really depends what the state's going to do with that test. We don't know what those numbers will look like, but how they design school accountability and what we do with those numbers will impact the way people respond to those assessments. Because by and large, the teachers are feeling like these are skills we want the kids to do. Absolutely, the fact that it's all happening at once. And PLPs, we're just starting on in terms of what those are going to look like, but I know that the folks here are committed to not just having it be a forum with a list of classes, that they do want it to be meaningful. Keep in mind, proficiency-based graduation does not need to be a complete overhaul. It, in its simplest form, could be, if we are requiring four years of English, what are the proficiencies that are in common in those four-year classes? And that's worthy work to do with our teachers, and they're looking forward to that work. But you're absolutely right, it's all coming at once. And if any of the legislators had seen it written in this way, they'd probably have the same reaction.
Yeah. We just had a meeting, Amy and I, with teacher leaders last week, and we started getting into the weeds a little bit about the grad requirements and the standards, and what are the essential learnings we want kids to leave Essex High School with, so that they can be career and college-ready. And it was a fascinating conversation as we got into, because a part of the, part of the thrust of the conversation was, well, it was nineteen eighty-five, since the last time we really rolled up our sleeves, and not too many of us were here. I was. But, you know, in nineteen eighty-five, so there's a lot of enthusiasm about the conversations that are going to occur, but of course, that's only one component of the conversation.
Yeah.
The internal piece.
I don't know how to answer your question about what the board can do, I would agree with you, there's a public education piece, but I, I don't know where to begin with that.
Well, I think, I mean, I think one is that the board hasn't had an opportunity, I think there's a value for the board to be on record of, of, you know, I don't think the board has put itself out there in having a position on the Common Core. I just heard, you represented a position of the faculty. The board hasn't really presented itself at this point, so. I think there's a value for that to be a case. I think the board has done that in a few positions with the, with the transformation changes at the high school, and I think that there's some value, that there isn't a question of, well, where's this coming from? There's some value that it's understood and been supported at the board level. So I think that there could be some of those things. And I think if the board doesn't support it, then I think that that's also valuable to know, because the board may support it, but not support the timing. And then we could go and have a discussion with, because a lot of these dates have changed. I mean, the legislature is known to change dates, so it's not an unusual practice for them to change it. And some of them are set initially somewhat arbitrary. You know, they usually say, well, in two years it will start, and then you kind of, once that starts to become real, it starts to become real now.
I think the one area that I would point to, that you probably would and should be more involved in, is the proficiency-based graduation requirements, because, as I remember years ago, sitting in a CVU board, where they had Carnegie units and the expectations for student learning, and a student passed their Carnegie units but didn't do the work to pass their ESLs, Val and the board had to sit and say, nope, you don't graduate. So I think that we're going to need to stay very closely in touch with you on, on the implications of that, depending on what the model is that EGS comes up with.
Well, we certainly owe you more information, and the other piece I would extend to you as well, is there are three, three opportunities during the year to have board members go with teachers and principals with their New England counterparts and meet, whether it's in Manchester, New Hampshire, or Norwood outside of Boston, Mass. And there's anywhere from three to four hundred in Manchester and over six hundred in Boston, and you can get there and join workshops and talk to other principals and teachers from Rhode Island and what they're doing, and it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. There isn't, there isn't a teacher that's gone that has not come back energized and excited about that.
Yeah.
But it, you know, once again, I realize you're all busy.
Well, I think this is, you know, this is our traditional problem, isn't it? This is competing goods.
Yes.
There isn't anything on this list that, you know, that would be a luxury, to have something on this list that's just plain bad to do. These are all, these are all the right things to do. It's really just, it's just really, it's just all the appetite.
Do they all have to be done? I mean, I understand a lot of these are legislative mandated, but I guess, I guess, just, you know, first blush to me is sort of like, you know, is this really an achievable action plan? I mean, is this like, is this like, can anybody do this? You know, like, because we want to, what we do, we want to do it well. You know what I mean? So I guess I'm just saying, like, for you, you know, is there something that could get, you know, just so that you'd have, be able to focus in, you know, two thousand and fifteen, but it sounds like...
Ten years.
What you've done as a board is to grant the teacher leadership model, and to be able to know that the internal copy of this has a teacher leader and an administrator assigned to every one of those roles. And that is an investment that you've put in place.
Yeah, I mean, I could articulate who's doing what, at least in the foreseeable future, but some of these outcomes that we're talking about, like the Common Core and Next Gen to a certain degree, even though it's only a year old, but work is ongoing. So I mean, it's not like everything is just, and the advisory PLP component, they're kind of married, and because of the VSAC, if you've seen some publications, VSAC, Naviance work together, that may not be as a big task as it might seem on the surface. So there, but I agree with Amy, I think the proficiency-based piece is, that's the big one, as I'm sitting here, because it's going to be, it's going to involve so many people who have been successful at traditional, that traditional paradigm. And that's where the intentional, you know, whether we have neighbor side, neighborhood chat meetings, we have to have multiple opportunities to inform people of the move and why the move. One of the best ways I've heard it put is with traditional, traditional reporting mechanisms that we've experienced and our students, for the most part, have experienced, you guarantee that the curriculum is taught. With a proficiency-based system where students have to demonstrate in multiple ways, skills and standards, you guarantee the curriculum is learned. And it's a, that to me is really powerful, as you keep that construct, and you have the habits of mind, which are really important, but separate from infiltrating an ABC, hundred ninety, eighty. Whether you turn your homework in or you're on time every day, that makes a difference, but it doesn't necessarily factor into the skill or standard learned or demonstrated.
Yeah.
It's important and it's reported on, but it's a separate component. It's almost like in your elementary school report card, your citizenship, if you will. So that's what the move is, and the only thing I would say as a follow-up, because you made me think, Brian, on that list of what I handed out, I know that's of what they've targeted within the New England states that are in the New England consortium. I'm going to call tomorrow and see what they have from a more national perspective.
Yep.
Because you made me think of that.
And like, you know, the MTSS is phenomenal, like Brian said, I mean, this is all like, this is awesome stuff. But is two thousand and fifteen the year that we really want teachers to have to now, like, figure out another way to do data? Or, I mean, I just, like, there's always a good time to do this stuff, but I'm just wondering how much, I'm just throwing it out there.
I know.
How doable is, you know, what's the max? There's got to be a max load.
Yeah, I'm feeling it.
Well, because there's an opportunity cost. Everything that moves over to transition and change management is an opportunity cost for energy and concentration in the classroom. I mean, it's just, it's a zero-sum game to, even to superhumans. But I think the other equation that's out there is that there's some portion, twenty to thirty to some higher percentage of our teaching staff in all our districts through the SU, that will churn over in the next five years.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe sooner.
You know, a huge amount of training effort and building with this staff will train and build with this staff, and then there will be an entirely, you know, then there will be a very large portion of new staff. So that, I think that's also to be considered. You can always find out, I'm a professional procrastinator, so you can always find out a reason to put it off, but, you know, I think what, at least I'm advocating, I don't know if there's a will of the board here, but to the degree that through all these good things, there is a lens of specific action the board can take that can lighten a load as we go along trying to execute this, whether it's legislative advocacy, whether it's more stakeholder engagement, whether it's part of our AI visioning work or so forth, that can get the word out, then I think the board should be playing those roles, because I think it supports the educational mission of the institution.
I think you're spot on with that, and I appreciate your comments. Two things I'd say in response to that, one, you're right on the numbers of staff turnovers. At the same time, that will allow us the opportunity to do the most important thing we do, and that's hire, and hire very, very specifically.
Who may have background in all of this.
You've got it. So that, I think that's, that's really, really important, moving forward. As a matter of fact, that's, that is going to be very significant. And the second piece, whatever it may become, and it may be a combination of, you know, we're going to have that legislative dessert, man, this could be a great year for, let's have a feast of desserts, because this could be a lengthy conversation moving forward. I, I think it would be really important collectively, and we've talked about it a little bit internally and countywide, of, you know, all the mandates that have semi-funded and non-funded mandates in the last twenty, thirty years, and maybe we can get relief on some of the other end.
Yeah.
From the legislative piece. So I think that, I'm not sure how quickly some of this is going to go away, but if some of the other things go away, that is also a pressure valve release that we could look at. So looking at that approach could be helpful.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great suggestion. Maybe it's not this, maybe it's something else.
Yeah, but I appreciate your comments.
So if we don't comply, does that mean we lose state dollars?
I think, well, I would say, a concern I would have moving forward is if we get too many folks that want to take the approach of an Indiana or New York State, and we don't have a high percentage of participation in our S-PAC assessment, I think that could have some financial consequences over time, yes. But, I mean, that's to be determined, because this was a pilot, so.
All right, I want to, I want to thank you for the, Rob and Bob, for your discussions tonight on school action plans. But moving on, our next topic is our planning day, which is scheduled for next Wednesday, eighteenth.
This is when I swap duties, so she can join us.
She can come over and join us.
Have the signatures in here.
Yep.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. So, so our planning day is next Wednesday, from noon till eight o'clock, over at Park Street School. We have, as, first, first item for that is the, we'll be doing our annual board, board self-assessment results. I'm trusting everyone's had a chance to go in and do their, the survey, get the survey done. I'll ask Ben Dickey to collect that data from Survey Monkey and send it back over to me, so I can compile it, and we'll have that discussion as we kick things off. Well, let me just say this, too, I am expecting to do a little bit of a get-to-know-you session again. We have, this will be your first time that you, we've done something like this with us, and we try and learn something about each other that we don't know, you know? So we'll do that. But then, we'll do the board self-assessments. I'm also expecting that we'll do some appreciative inquiry planning. We have administration to come back and tell us about unfunded mandates that we'll have to come back and do. We've, we've had a discussion in a couple of different sessions on the grading scale issue and how we're going to be progressing on that, and then also work on our annual work plan, in particular, how it relates back to some of our, our board goals and evaluations. So dinner will be served later, we'll start at twelve o'clock at Park Street.
Eat lunch before we go.
Yes, well, let me, let me just double-check that with the superintendent, but I would say, the building will be open at twelve. If we start at twelve-thirty, so you can get some... If we start at twelve-thirty, so you can get some lunch ahead of time, that would be, that would be probably a good idea. We're just starting off talking the discussion about the planning day. In that, we're going from noon till eight at Park Street School. Agenda topics to include our board self-assessment review, appreciative inquiry work, and where we are with our strategic planning and our initiative that we had back on the twenty-eighth of May, and our community involvement events, and how we're planning for that. Unfunded mandate discussion, the grading scale, continued discussion, and the annual work plan for the U forty-six board. And the question came up about having lunch ahead of time, and I said, well, we'll start at twelve o'clock, but will the, the meeting will really start at twelve-thirty, but come at twelve o'clock, and then we'll work through till dinner. We'll have a break for dinner, and then finish up. Okay? Is there anything else on the planning day?
How much time can you dedicate, planning and dedicate for the AI? I'm gonna be meeting with Mary Jane Thursday.
I'm kind of open. Is there, is there, you know, two, two and a half hours?
Yeah, the primary focus would be to follow up on the twenty-eighth, because we'll, the core planning team will be taking everything from, you know, will be carrying the load for the, for the next June work.
Right.
Though the board can discuss, I think, next steps beyond the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
With other IA possibilities, AI possibilities. So, two and a half hours?
Yeah. And what I'll do is I'll, again, Ben asked me to get him some data, so he can properly warn this meeting a week in advance, right? And so I'll lay out an agenda with those topics and times to, so that, that'll be published. Okay?
So we'll need to make sure that happens by Wednesday.
Right. Meeting at Park Street. Yeah. Any other questions about, about the planning day?
For the point of purpose, is are we expected to be there from noon to eight? Are we being the principals?
Um.
Yes?
I volunteer.
No, I don't think so.
Would you have a problem with starting right away with the AI work?
Right.
And then going into doing the board survey afterwards?
Yeah, I, I think we can structure it so that the work, the items that we would need to have you there, we'd get done in the afternoon.
Okay.
Okay.
It's taken different forms over the years.
Right.
Mm-hmm, right. Mm-hmm. Okay, that's good.
Okay. Any other questions about the planning day?
So I probably can tell Mary Jane something like twelve-thirty-ish to three o'clock or so.
Yeah, I think that's probably, probably fair.
So this is the last day of school, pre-ES, June eighteenth?
For staff, yeah.
Yes. So would you prefer after three for the principals to be there?
No, if it's, if it's twelve, that's twelve-thirty time frame, should be fine.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to check in and make sure.
Because we're, we're doing our, just a quick comment, I know you got more, we're doing our wrap-up with staff, full staff on the seventeenth, because we have some folks that have flexed in a service day during the course of the year, so we wouldn't have everybody there on the eighteenth.
Here anymore, okay. Great. Great, thank you.
We're good.
Good.
Oh, one other thing for the board, as we talked about, actually before planning day on the eighteenth, and we've already talked about CTE recognition night, which is tomorrow night, but then EHS graduation is on Saturday, the fourteenth.
Ten AM.
Ten AM in the hockey rink.
Yeah.
And I, I know I got a mailing requesting, you know, if you can attend, let the administration know, so that they can have some tickets set aside. But if, if you can attend, that would be wonderful. Okay? Next is our community engagement event. Little bit of debrief for, for what happened on the twenty-eighth. I know that, Brian, I, I've got a Google Docs notification from you, which had, had, but I don't know the distribution of those things, right? So I, I don't know if everyone got that or...
Everybody on the board.
Yeah.
Everybody on the board and the two administrators, just as an initial setting.
Great site.
Yeah, it's great.
Great.
It's great.
Well organized.
That could be, so we could, what we could do is distribute that to anybody, that we have an email that attended the site, or we can make that site public and make it available that, you know, sort of, anything we choose to do with it. Just a Google site built on CSU.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Really well organized. That might be part of your conversation on planning day.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, we know how best to make all of that qualitative data available.
There's also, in our org notes, we talk about using the services of RETN to recap the event for greater public and discuss next steps. Is, is that something that we wanna do? And if so, how do we, how would we go off, go about making that happen?
Well, that was having RETN here tonight to talk a little bit about what the event was, how we're planning to meet again and disseminate the information.
Okay.
While it's being filmed tonight.
All right, so, so for the members of the viewing audience, we had, we had a community event back on May twenty-eighth in, in the cafeteria here, where we had stakeholders from our, our, our school district, our community, parents, students, board members, teachers, community members participate in a, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember the exact title, but the, can you remember what it is?
Enhancing the Entrance Experience.
I'm sorry, say again.
Enhancing the Entrance Experience.
Right. And we spent some time in, in an appreciative inquiry format, learning, learning from each other, what, what are some of the entrance experiences we've had from either significant academic or governmental or public buildings in the past? And then categorizing some of those themes and ideas on, across those experiences, and then mapping those out into key criteria of, of interest for what we would like to see happen in Essex. And so that, that data has been collected, it's, it's been compiled, and this is the data that I previously mentioned, that Brian Donahue had put together in a, in a Google Docs and had shared with us. So we'll spend some time with, in our steering group, talking about where we're going with that, but it's also part of our appreciative inquiry, next steps at our, our planning day, where we're gonna, where we're gonna go with that. Brian, is there anything you wanna add?
I, I was, I was curious if people would, and if it's okay, if we had the time for people to share some takeaways, the sort of, their bright spots, or what they thought of their personal experience.
I think everyone was there that night, weren't?
Yeah, I did.
Oh.
It was just, I thought it was a productive meeting. I mean, I, you know, I'm mythic about going to meetings here and there, but I, I don't, never mime when something actually gets done.
Right.
And to me, something got done. And it, it was the first time that couple hours actually just flew by for me. I mean, I thought it was well done, I, I thought people interacted well, you know, I met people I didn't know before, and I think it was very upbeat, and it was just a very much something, this is something we can do, and, and they were excited about, this is something we can do, and they took part in something. I mean, so I, I really came away that was, that was really worth my time tonight. I mean, it was really nice, that was my first step.
Yeah. Al?
Yeah, the structure really was very helpful in keeping the dialogue going and reaching conclusions and recommendations, enabling the choices to be a little easier. I, I, it's good.
Aaron?
I was really happy to see it so well attended. I thought the numbers were really good, given the short timeframe that we had, really, to kind of rally the troops.
Yes.
And I agree, I thought it was, it was really positive, and the people that I talked to were, I talked to a few teachers, a few community members, and everybody was really, really engaged in it and gave some great feedback. And it was obviously very interesting at the end to kind of see how people really did have some similar thought processes and kind of where they thought we should sort of go. So that was really kind of reaffirming.
Hmm.
So I thought it was very, very good evening.
Liz?
Yeah, I thought it was fantastic. It's very refreshing to use that positive lens and frame things in a positive way, which I think was well accomplished. I would say that for the outreach and communication piece, I heard feedback about confusion in our messaging about what was actually gonna happen that night, and I think we need to just be very thoughtful about when we're going to the community, to be extremely clear about what, I was sitting with Jeff Goodrich, and a, and an educator came in with her mother, with having completely different expectations about what was gonna happen that night. So I just think as we go forward and, and wanna talk about this great work that we're doing, which I do believe in wholeheartedly, I just think we need to be really clear about the way we message it to the community.
I, I would just add that it was really encouraging to hear feedback from the students after the meeting about how the word used that night was empowered, and I think I'll use it with them, too. They really felt as students that they were shoulder to shoulder with any adult there, and they really enjoyed that experience.
Yeah, it's great.
The, the students. Not to be lost.
Mm-hmm.
And they're excited about another opportunity, the, the students.
Not to, I won't pile on, because I agree with all the comments everyone said, I, I will say that since that meeting and the handful of times I've come back up to school since that meeting, I've come, I've looked at it saying, wow, you know, I, I, how, how do I see things, how do I see things based on some of the ideas that I've heard? And I, it's, it's allowed me to look at, look at our, our building and our facility and our entrance and our whole experience of coming into Essex a different way as a result of that meeting. It, it has invigorated me, so. Brian, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I found it really, I found it really energizing. And I, and I found it useful, I think, you know, going into this, I think Bob was probably our, our veteran appreciative inquiry person around the table for some time. And I think not until I was able to go through the whole interview process in earnest and go through then the assimilation of the data, and then go through to the very end in a less kind of pretend way, but in a kind of open, like, oh, this is happening, and this is happening. Did I see the power of it? Like, like you said, like, two hours, like, you're kidding me, we're done? Like, time's over? It is an amazing, it has power to it, because you're, you're talking about something that you have some passion and interest in, you're sharing it with a stranger, it is, and it becomes real. And you can transfer that dream, that discovery into a dream.
Yeah.
And it's very different than starting off with saying, oh, God, I hate that, we gotta fix that.
Yeah.
You know, it's just this whole different energy that comes into the room.
To remind you, you've got two-thirds of CTE faculty who've gone through the credit-bearing class, and their focus was their teaching.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it...
One more strand next year.
I mean, even if nothing else, I think one of the, one of the elements that I would love the board to play around with is the, the power of the question. You know, that, we always talk about we wanna engage our stakeholders, but I think what we, one of the things that is really evident in that, in that moment that we had, is that power of that first question, is to, is to spark a conversation. I mean, I sat down with somebody I'd never met before, and we shared a lot in forty minutes.
Yeah.
Much beyond the interview.
Right.
Yeah.
But it really then made the next group dynamic so much more comfortable, and then the next part more comfortable and so forth, so I think it, there's a lot of power to it.
So I have kind of a nuts and bolts question, or maybe I'm not, I think this goes along with it, but we allocated money in the budget to do some immediate improvements to the exterior. So what are next steps on that?
I mean, that, that's exactly what our board planning time is.
Okay, good. Just wanted to clarify, that is, okay.
That's a June eighteenth topic.
Good, okay, so we're actually going to kind of uphold some of the things that came from that meeting, but also...
We'll go into the design phase now.
Mm-hmm. Okay. For the meet, for the immediate stuff, like, we're gonna try to do this summer, like landscaping and things like that?
Mm.
Because I, some of the physical changes, we, we can't do, you know, building structure and things like that, we can't do immediately, but I just, something is needed fairly immediately, so that, I look forward to talking about that.
So do you, thankful that you asked that question. Would you like Grant Geisler to be a part of that part of the conversation? Because he'll be communicating whatever your wishes are forward.
Why don't you put him on, why don't you, why don't you give him the head stuff?
Yeah.
But why don't I, why don't we find out a little bit more, I've never gone through this next part?
Right.
And I don't, I don't think of us as, I think of us as delegating the, the work of this, you know, sort of directing the design?
Yeah.
Right.
Designing the direction, kind of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm not sure how much we wanna be into the, like, the details of a solution, but we wanna be trying to take and have an allegiance between this feedback and what happens.
Yeah.
And through trying to direct that. So, but yeah, why don't you put him on those?
Yeah.
I'll talk to Mary Jane about how she sees the work happening on the...
And they were both there, so I think it'd be great that there'll be that, kind of bringing into the fold.
Yeah.
And listening to your thinking as a board.
Yeah.
And, and I would just share, what I learned from that experience was how intentional public engagement needs to be. You know, that when we say we're gonna have an event, you know, think about the hours we spent just in framing the question and developing the workbook and the pieces to that, and always thinking ahead about how are we going to take this learning that we have as board and know we can replicate as, as we need to, these, you know, these processes moving forward. So hopefully this is long-term investment in how the board engages with its community.
It'd be a very expensive one-off.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda was the student handbook. This is a topic that we've asked both Principal Riordan and Director Travers to share their plans, review, how, how that handbook is being reviewed with students and parents going forward, and where we are with linking that to some IT opportunities that may exist coming forward into next year, and acknowledgement of those, what those rules are and so forth. So, Rob, I'll just turn it over to you.
So, initial thoughts on the, the student component?
And let me just rewind. This year, the attempt was made to have the parents, upon receiving the welcome back to school letter with directions, Mike Meyer gave them to me, in terms of their piece of accessing the parent power school portal with an acknowledgement, checkoff, that they had read and acknowledged the handbook, that had to occur before their son or daughter and they could access the portal. Sounded good in the summer, but some of the problems we ran into were those families that have a difficult time understanding language. Those families where there's disengagement. We had some kids wanting to get in, but their parent really wasn't interested if they ever got in. So in other words, that was really concerning and we didn't anticipate that. So moving forward next year, what we will do, because we have advisory on Wednesday. Wednesday is August 27th, the first day of school. For the student's perspective, we're going to have in an advisory, presentation of the drug alcohol and drug policy and the weapons policy and probably the dress code. And students will have the opportunity to hear it, get a copy of it, ask questions, discussions, and sign off on it. The parent piece, I'm meeting with Mike after graduation and not just he and I, but collectively, looking at a way perhaps to do an electronic checkoff with the parent, but a different protocol or procedure than we did this year to get more, be more proactive with groups that we may have difficulty in reaching and not hamstring the students to access, but trying to stay away from 1,300 letters going out if we can avoid the paper trail. The students, we've got the captive audience now that we have four grades of advisory. We should have that all signed off day one. The parent piece, that's, that's to be continued.
Right.
In terms of discussion.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we're going to have separate log-on for the parent?
That's one conversation, yeah. Yep. Exactly. For those that point out, the majority of folks did the electronic checkoff and it's easy to see, but you really just put the others at a disadvantage when they can't get in. And that was not the intent. But unintended consequences, no.
So Rob, what I, what I heard you say was, as we go into the year, because we've got four, all four grades have advisories available, that we should be able to.
Sign off day one.
Sign off day one with the students. And I understand there's challenges with parents, guardians, et cetera, right? I think I can speak for the Board at some point in the fall. We will want to hear on how successful we were on getting the students to sign off on that, so.
I'm very happy to report that out.
Okay.
One of the things that I noticed recently was that on the EHS, on CTE, and on all the school websites, the student handbook link is just the abbreviated handbook. It's the school-specific or the school highlighted handbook. And then references that the full handbook is available on the CCSU website. So you have to go back to the CCSU kind of core page to get the full handbook.
That is a problem.
It should be linked.
Yeah. It, it, it should be, it should be something like EHS supplement and, or something like that. But it should be like, there should be one term.
Yeah.
Student handbook should be one term and it should exist one place. And then if there's like highlights, like a weapons policy, address code and cell phone or whatever any school wants to do to have like an abbreviated version, just kind of call it something else. Because when I was looking through it, I was like, this is weird. Like, there's a whole bunch of stuff that seems like it should be in here. So it just, I would definitely.
No, that's good, you're right, because we found that too. There's also an inconsistency in one aspect of the dress code policy between the handbook and the EHS supplement. Very minor.
Yeah.
But, oh, we found it. Yeah.
Anything else about the handbook? Teacher, student acknowledgement, parent acknowledgement? Okay. Then moving on then to the consent agenda. We have consent agenda tonight, the warrants, meeting minutes, which are included in the, in the org notes that have been sent. We have a tax, a participation note or anticipation note, not participation note, that I have in front of us here. A bid for approval for a CTE bus and a series of professional appointments, although there is one professional appointment I would like to have pulled, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's the one in the case of Jason Kittredge, Natural Resources Instructor at CTE. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with, with the professional appointment pulled? Moved, moved by Aaron, second by Al? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-nil. The, you can tell I watched the French Open this weekend, right? The is there anything superintendent De Nove about the about that pulled, the pulled?
Yep, I'd like to, I have an executive session.
Yes.
Plan for a personnel contract matter. I'd like to talk about.
That's a topic for, okay.
And then we'll come out of executive session, you'll be better positioned to make a decision.
Thank you. What agenda items should be calendared for future board meetings? We've talked about the June 18th planning day and those high-level, those topics to be discussed. Is there anything else that we need to plan for?
We're going to give you some information, I think, I think, at the August meeting on proficiency-based reporting.
Proficiency-based reporting.
I thought we were.
Somebody go come and talk to us more about it, correct? Some kind of presentation about exactly what it is.
Yes. So you'll be able to be more familiar and confident with what's coming down.
We also had an, an item about the athletic training rules that we were going to have Athletic Director Hockenberry in probably one of his final acts, is he, is he?
He's done this Friday.
He's done this Friday, okay. I had it in my note, it's, it's in the org notes here for athletic training rules, but frankly, I kind of, I lost the specificity of what the question was there. Is it resonating with anybody else?
We, it's, our athletic training rules have a, a no discretion.
A no, right. Zero tolerance.
There's no discretion. Zero tolerance, no discretion aspect to them. So that's, we're, we're, I'm not sure how many of our policies are in that situation in which there's an event and a, and a pre-prescribed consequence regardless of, of the circumstances involved. But I know that we specifically had that as a circumstance with our weapons policy and the Board chose to revise our weapon policy so that we didn't have a prescribed consequence to things like a butter knife or to certain situations like that. So that was, I think, the issue that was brought up.
Is, is this a topic we want to talk about on the 18th?
I think we're in a point of time with the departure of a longstanding athletic director and a brand-new one coming in that we're probably.
If the timing isn't right to, to pick this topic up?
I think it would be difficult timing for a new athletic director to take this policy up.
Okay. All right.
I don't think that it should be a long time for, say, a listening tour to occur.
Right.
And to be open to hearing from various perspectives on it. But to engage and set up expectations that something may change, I don't think would be fair to the, to the person just coming into the position.
And this is something that Policy Task teams have been talking about.
Yeah.
I assume we'll continue in the interim of that.
Okay. Any other calendar items to be discussed? Hearing none. I would like to move into executive session at 9:35 for the purpose of a personnel contract matter. Oh, I need a motion.
Second.
I'll move it, Brian, on Brian's seconds, okay? So we'll go next door into executive session. Thank you.